You are watching access Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot excess Laporte County dot org.
Hello, everyone. You're here at the social status of African American males monthly meeting. Right off the gate, we would like to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone, for that. Do anyone want to do any silent prayer for the shootings that's been occurring in our in our neighborhoods as of just recently at the beach last night? So maybe we can give about ten seconds of a silent prayer just for the violence. Okay, thank you, guys, very much. Yes, sir.
You know, me and Roberts don't get along, but I would just like to make the point that we also give homage to the two brothers in Tennessee who stood up to the legislature there.
Okay, God bless. We give homage to the two brothers in Tennessee and to the legislation. We still can include that in a ten seconds of prayer, or you want to just do it one more?
That's good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, brother.
Yes, sir. So what we need to do, we need to have a reading of attendance to see if we have a quorum. Ms. Conley, Secretary Conley, can you please handle that? I need to turn that off. I don't know why I have it there. I'm sorry.
Can he fly?
Here, present.
Rodney McCormick. Stacy Benny. Linda Conley. Pastor Carol. Tony Cox. Sean Fitzpatrick. Carrie Hogan. Pastor Dwayne Hurt.
Present.
Pastor Robert Johnson. Willie Millsap.
Present.
Faye Moore.
Present.
And a new member, I understand, Mike Jones.
Yes, present.
Anyone name I missed? Anyone on Zoom? Is that Pastor Johnson?
It's the best justice.
Yeah.
Says owner. Maybe you can send it over. Happens to be a member of the board, can you let us know?
Pastor Johnson, is that you, the owner of the Zoom? Who is the owner?
Okay, what we do with that is, oh, there you go.
Yes.
That sounds like.
Is that Pastor Carol?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Pastor Carol here.
Good job, Pastor Carol. We got you booked in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on Zoom? I can't see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay, we have eight presidents, so that does constitute a quorum. So we can continue our meeting of social status of African American males. I'd like to call this meeting to order. At the same time, we have the reading of the mission statement that used to be our best friend, Mary, Commissioner Carrie Hogan's duties. I don't have the mission statement available. I'm not sure if, maybe Miss Commissioner Fay, oh, you don't have that handy? Do anyone here has it handy, so we can continue on? If not, we can maybe read it at the next one. Okay, looks like we have to read our mission statement at the next meeting and have it compensate us two readings. Yep, so can we come up with the two thousand twenty-three March meeting minutes? We can have an approval of the meeting minutes, give you time to rehearse them or relook at them, and then we'll have a motion to, inside a motion to accept.
We didn't have a March meeting.
Okay, for Secretary and for the board, we didn't have a meeting in March. I just wanted to put it out there that the meetings would have been accepted, but they're not a they didn't have a meeting in March. And so therefore, we will have to go to the treasurer's report.
Just a minute. But we have February meeting.
Oh, February meeting, you want to approve those?
So if everyone have a copy, we can read it and see if you want to approve them, or if there's something amiss.
Give you time to relook over February's meeting minutes, maybe two or three minutes, or about a minute. Because, you know, we're going to try to get it along through this process really fa- not really fast, but diligently.
Move the minutes be accepted as read, as written.
We have a motion in a second to accept February meeting minutes. A roll call, Secretary Conley.
Okay. Can he fly?
Aye.
Rodney McCormick's not here. Stacy Benny's not here. Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol. Pastor Carol, did you get a copy of the meeting minutes for February?
Pastor Carol speaking, but we can't hear him. So what we can do, Ms. Conley, we can just leave him as abstinent, you know, abstain.
Okay.
There he is.
Pastor Carol?
I did not. Did you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay.
Just say it, hey.
Yeah, she said he did not, so we'll do it abstain. Great job, Pastor Carol. You're doing good.
Thank you.
Walter Cox.
Yeah, aye.
Sean Fitzpatrick's not here. Carrie's not here. Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson's not here. Mr. Millsap.
Aye.
Faye Moore. I. Mike Jones.
I wasn't on board.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. So we have seven in agreement and one abstain.
Okay, with that being said, that passes. Yeah, that passes. Minutes are approved for February. March minutes, we didn't have a meeting, so there's no March minutes to accept. To continue on, we have the treasurer's report. Commissioner Benny is not present today. So we did have that within, sent to us and our emails. I don't know if you guys had took a chance to overlook your email that Commissioner Treasurer Benny sent to everyone. And if you did, would you, I would like to entertain a motion to accept it? Or if you have any questions, or you want to take time to review, go ahead on your phone, because we don't have it on paper.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It was brought up that we had given the scholarship winner was Cornell Branch the fourth. It was indicated that Cornell Branch, the fourth, was the scholarship winner. Bill Ashley Scholarship winner for twenty twenty-two. I don't see it on the report. Does anyone have any knowledge of that?
I had known who was the actual scholarship winner. I just heard it for the first time, as you did.
Because if it, if it's true, then we need to have it on our report, and it's not on the report for twenty twenty-two.
Oh. Oh, wow. So if it's not on the report, can we just can we hold over and table the treasurer minutes for this month, since our treasurer's in treasurer's Benny isn't here to, you know, have any say on that? So we'll table them, we'll table that matter to next month, just to next month, Secretary Conley. Okay, we're going to continue on with the agenda.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Oh, well, she isn't here to table it, but we can. Can we get a roll call to table the treasury report? I don't, I mean, unless you all want to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we're getting right on along. We have new businesses. We don't have too much under new business. No one called in or emailed any things to be placed on the agenda under new business. So at this time, since it's only twelve fifteen, and we almost more than a third of through the agenda, do anybody want to speak quickly on something that they may have for new business? Any commissioner that might want to speak anything to presently, pastly, new business?
Well, the education chair is.
The education chair? As Dwayne would, when you didn't take that responsibility. But you're on the education.
No. I don't.
Okay, other thing I would like to say, I hope that our education committee get out the information about the B.J. Ashley Scholarship. This year is going so quickly. I don't think they realize that it's already April. And because it's on our website, the B.J. Ashley Scholarship application, but it has last last year's information. So if our education committee could update the scholarship information to reflect when we will be accepting applications for the B.J. Ashley Scholarship.
It's a big difference in last year's information to this year's information.
Yes. Just the date.
Change your dates.
Yes, they just need to make sure that the date gets changed from May sixth, twenty twenty-two to probably May sixth, twenty twenty-three. I don't, I'm not sure of when they want to review the applications. But just a point order that the B.J. Ashley Scholarship needs to be updated on the website.
Okay, so you're saying we need to update the DJ, the scholarship date on the website? Okay, we probably can leave that to Secretary. Would you like to update that with the IT person? Or I can too. I like. Okay, either way, we get that updated. Any more updates maybe need to be said? Not, not right away. Good to have you, Mike Jones. I'm looking at you, man. Long, long time, buddy. Good to see you. God bless you. Hey, we go on with the agenda. We go to old business. We really didn't have much under old business, but we do have some suggestions. Some people want to speak on, commissioners want to speak on our business. No one hit the email and said, actually put a place it on the agenda, but I'm giving allowing time for someone to speak on old business.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did anyone follow up on the Facebook password with Mr. Corley?
I can speak on that part. No, because the ultimate, ultimately, the Facebook page of our Facebook social status African American males, there's no code to retrieve. And obviously, no one has it some kind of way, and we're not going to rebuttal and go back and forth on that. And so we have a choice to either make another one or continue with this one without the password. It's up to you guys and make a motion and decide what you want to do.
I have a question. It's not a motion. Question is, what would we lose by going to a new beginning, to a new Facebook?
Not nothing. Actually, I went back and looked over the page. It isn't that much history so far. Starting up.
Instead of starting, starting another page, fresh with our own password. So nobody can intrude. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to start us a brand-new Facebook page with password that's acceptable, and we keep the password hopefully in the clerk's office for future references. When we all leave off the board, it will be maintained up there, and can we get a roll call from Secretary Conley?
Mr. Fly?
Aye.
Mister Mister Jones?
Aye.
Mister Millsap? Conley, aye. I said, I'm sorry. Aye. Mister Cox?
Aye.
And Pastor Carol?
Aye.
Thank you. So we have eight ayes.
We have eight ayes, no abstains, no negatives. Motion passes. We'll work on that. Hopefully by next month, we get that deleted. I can maybe contact the original holder of that page, which is the old President Marty Corley. And tell him if he can delete that, because it's on his access of his Facebook extension of that. So he will be the only one, he will be the only one that can actually delete the page. So if we can tell him, delete the page, stop it, and then I'll go from there, creating us another one. Give all the information to the clerk and whoever else want to have access to the page and the password. Because, you know, all of us actually can. It doesn't make a difference. We're all commissioners. But we're not just going to have certain ones can and some words can't. Okay, we're still on old business. If anyone has any more suggestions to speak on.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Ms. Conley for doing our annual report.
Thank you.
No problem.
Feed me to the punch.
Well, I just want to say about those minutes, I gave it my best effort. There's a lot of them out there that I was trying to.
But as of now, you have everything under control.
Basically.
Okay.
I do, I do want to speak on a little bit of old business concerning minutes. Now, with the minute, minutes that we were behind before Secretary Conley became the secretary. We maybe was seven, maybe seven, seven, some months back in the minutes. We were going in and out of position, you know, some coming and some quitting, some starting, you know. So what we need to do is, we do need to get caught up with that. We thought last February, when we had a meeting, we thought we had it organized and understood that how we would go about getting the meeting minutes fulfilled. But it didn't go as accordingly as we thought. And so what I would like to suggest is that instead of putting all the placing, all those meeting minutes on Secretary Conley, that, that isn't any fault of hers that we are that far behind in meeting minutes. She wasn't even on the board in some of the minutes, meeting minutes. And she so graciously took the responsibility of being a secretary for us. A lot of us declined. That's a tough position of secretary, and meeting minutes isn't no easy go. So I would suggest and hope that some of us on this board, including myself, take a month of meeting minutes and get it done. And I said, we get it done. I would like to take a month of meeting minutes, and it's going to be my first time. So if it's anybody else's first time, don't feel alone. But I don't think we should put that task solely on her of eight months of meeting minutes. And it's not her problem, wasn't hers mix-up or any of those things. So all this pressure we put in on Secretary Conley concerning some minutes that she wasn't accounted for, accountable for, I think is kind of damaging. So I would like to take a outlook, and maybe we could contact each other via email and see which month we want to take. And I said, we all take a month and do some meeting minutes, and whoever don't want to take a month of meeting minutes, maybe that'd be less, you know, whatever we take, it'd be less for Secretary Conley, no matter what we take. So that's, that just suggests, I don't need a motion for that. We just got to get that done, okay? Okay, you guys. Anybody else want to have anything to say in old business? Okay, we're going to move on, and we're going accordingly, and I love this. We can go to subcommittee reports. We have the education subcommittee. I'm not sure who's the chair. I thought Dwayne was the chair in education, but it was window, and then Dwayne came, and he says he's not, so. And criminal justice.
I believe that Stacy was handling both education and criminal justice.
Well, Commissioner Benny acknowledged to me that she's the VP of Criminal Justice. And on education, I don't think, I think she's just a a part of the member.
I think I have, I think I have that in some notes, but I can bring it to the next meeting for sure.
I'm on the education subcommittee also, so I would like to enlighten and cite some education things going on. With the education subcommittee, we hadn't had a meeting yet. And also, I want to do say this while we getting right on subcommittees. We got to get active. I mean, I'm honest, I'm serious. We study having these meetings. I was this close to canceling this meeting this month also, wasn't I, Secretary Conley? I was this close because we come into these meetings without having nothing done. Nobody has met in the subcommittee. Nobody very valuable things that has got accomplished. I don't come here just to, for the camera. You know, we come for things to get done. And just to sit up here, just to look at each other and do this quick agenda in and out, I would have canceled the meeting. Secretary Conley told me, don't. So I didn't. But next meeting, we're going to have some meetings. We're going to have subcommittee meetings and reports and stuff to address and tell the public that we're doing. We're already kind of getting on the front line again with the public. They starting to ask, why are we here? So we got to step up.
Rightfully so. We need some.
Yeah, rightfully so.
Need some substance.
Yes, sir. Okay, health subcommittee is the health subcommittee chair.
No.
Okay.
That's Pastor Johnson.
Okay, when it comes to health, anybody want to speak on health in general? Not too tough. How's COVID coming along? Anyone aware? Is that just out of the moon, or is it different thing going on now with a different name?
Well, I think that the hospital has lessened their requirements. You don't need a mask when you go in. It's up to you or the patient that you're going to see to see if you want to wear a mask. So I think that it's, you're still encouraging people to be aware, if you haven't had any of your shots, to get your shots vaccinations and everything like that. But I've looked in the paper. I see that there are a variety of health fears going on. So I'm anxious to see what Pastor Johnson said that they're going to be having with the minority health, I'm assuming, and things in the community. But there's a lot of different fears going on.
Yeah, that's great. Maybe I can reach out to one of our old, old treasurers, Nyla Williams. I think maybe she was a secretary backed up years ago. I've been here for a while. Maybe I can reach out to her. She's through St. Francis. Yeah, she's at St. Francis. Yeah, and me and her still have, have dialogue together. So maybe I can reach out to her and see what's, what's new, what's going on with the health issues, and we can bring that back to the table next month. But regardless, you guys, just because we ain't at our meeting, doesn't mean we can't. So go via email and get some meetings set up, okay? Okay, we down to employment. Millsap's here. He's a great guy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I went down to work one, which is located in the old central school building, and they have a current list of openings in the county quarter and Laporte. So I will give that copy to our secretary, and hopefully she can make copies, and if anyone's interested, they can grab it.
Sounds good.
Because it's quite a few. It's hard to, you know, to put it on our Facebook page.
Yeah.
There will be a hard copy available, and you can get that also at the office on the old central school.
Hey, once we start the new Facebook page, everybody going to have access. We're going to give you all guys the code. We're not going to pick and choose. If you don't want to get on there, just don't get on there, you know. There's no biggie. So I.
I'll give you that. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What a range of jobs we're talking about.
All ranges.
Okay.
It's just a list of available positions that are open.
What is the possibility of us joining this, one of the Union of Premise programs?
It's always a possibility. Just got to make it happen.
I would like to go up here with you and just try to figure out some way we can kind of accelerate that process. I know you want it, but I know you're going to need some support as well.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question also.
Yes, secretary.
The employment, kind of piggybacking on. The trade unions, but sometimes, have we ever thought about thinking outside of the box for the kids?
For example?
For example, I just noticed where, I think he's from Laporte, that culinary school. And that sound kind of interesting and promising. And also, what about nursing? For our, nursing for our male, you know, we need male nurses also. And it, and I think sometimes our kids are afraid, but they think that they don't have the smarts, but mainly that's just hard work that you have to put into it. And I think that maybe we can talk to, if Ivy Tech still have their program.
I'm pretty sure they probably do.
Find out what the requirements are, and that things, sometimes, you know, the kids might want to do that. But I thought that culinary school program that they did in.
And that list that I'm going to provide you, there should be some on there also. Thank you.
Great.
Chairman Fly?
Yes, sir. Come on, Pastor Carol, you there?
Yeah. Do we have, do we have anything at all positive action that we are doing now? Is anything on the table? Is anything going on? Do we have some kind of activity, some kind of to present to our board, from our board to the Michigan City?
Before they answer that question, Pastor Carol, we had a hectic, we had a hectic last year, as you know. Because you've been here currently with us for a long time, just as myself.
Yes.
We have gone in and out with commissioners, in and out with appointments. Everything that we started, we never really did finish. And I will be honest to sell you that, and it's still on the table. But what we can do now, Pastor Carol, now that everybody's appointments have been made and everyone is put an obligation to step up to the plate, even yourself. You can give some input and some suggestions also. And we can move forward with doing a lot of different things in the community. Do you have any suggestions of anything you would like to have done?
I believe that you're right in everything that you're saying, that the subcommittees, we have to do something. Now, I realize that I'm on, I'm not on any subcommittee right now. I don't have a lot of room to talk, I guess, but.
Right.
You know, so I understand.
Together, when far we all fall, okay? I'm going to fall with you. All right, so we got that done. We, we understanding that we need to get active. We got to activate. Are we running good time? So we continue on to any, the next subcommittee, which is criminal justice. The chair and the vice chair of the criminal justice isn't here, but I did get a, oh, me and you, are we all in there? But I was going to say something. I was going to read it too. Yeah, I was going to say what, yeah, I was going to scope, but you know what, Mr.? Thank you very much.
Go ahead, but, all right. Here's a email that I received this morning from Commissioner Benny. Good morning, this notice, this is notice that we are having a meeting on this Friday, April fourteenth, at twelve noon downstairs at City Hall in the EEOC room. See you then, Stacy. And I know one of the irons that we do have in the fire is taking the young men to the DeSable Museum.
Yeah.
And that should be happening here real soon. So I'm sure, sure things are hoping to, on Friday for that.
Thanks for reading that for Commissioner Benny. I think she sent that out, tagged us all, but Dwayne, thank you very much, Commissioner Hurt. With, when it comes to the DeSable trip is, is, has been in motion for a while. We, myself and also the vice chair and the chair, we, we were kind of concerned about weather, not dragging kids along in slushy and stormy weather. And so even though we kind of stumbled and bumbled on down the road, I think this would have been the best opportunity to take them in the summer in a better weather anyways. So I think it all worked out accordingly. With that being said, we go to social factors, subcommittee, and then good of order, and we're going to get out of here. We go to social factors, um, subcommittee, and then good of order, and we gonna get out of here with a public comment. So get on to social factors, subcommittee, anyone here, Ms. Faye, would you like to speak on that? I know you kinda sometimes do.
I have not set up a meeting with the social factors, um, cuz. Uh, during February, cause was Black History Month and we were real busy with all those activities. And I tried to set up a meeting in March, but, um, I, I didn't, I guess I didn't get the notice out in time. As I showed up, but nobody else showed up, that was at the, uh, library.
I remember that.
But, um, so I have not set up a meeting, but I'm thinking about doing my social factor meetings. Right after our meetings.
Mm-hmm, so they can be right here with you.
So our next meeting will be. Next month, right after our meeting, the social factors meeting will be meeting here. And, uh, cuz normally there's nobody else coming after us on Wednesdays. So it'll be the second Wednesday in May.
May ten.
That's a good idea, I might, I might carbon copy that, okay?
Okay, great, we got it going on, social factors, anybody that's not in social factors like to speak about a topic of social factors that's here. We running good time, a really good time. Okay, great, um, so we get on, uh, to the good of order, the commissioner roundtable. But can I, can I, uh. Entertain a motion to change the agenda to have the public comment first? And then the good of order commissioner roundtable next, so we can have the last word instead of the public. I entertain a motion to change the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, um, can we get all the I or N?
I.
I. Okay, we changed the agenda around to have a, where we go to public comment first, and, uh. Do we have anywhere from the public here? That wanna speak?
South Bend.
Okay, I know, that's why I said it, let's get him up here. Let's walk up to the podium, big man, let's get it. Yes, sir.
Some of these people might have relatives in South Bend.
Okay, my name is Desmott Upchurch, I'm currently running for mayor of South Bend, Indiana. Um, I wanna thank you all for, um, um, having the meeting and not canceling. Because I wouldn't have got that information, so I wanna thank you all for having it. Um, I really wanna bring this program to South Bend. I believe that, um. We're, we in South Bend need to find a different approach to address the violence with African-American males in South Bend, so. Um, I'm really looking at all, um, facets of programs or commissions that. Could be necessary so that we can address these issues, and I believe you all have the best in the state of Indiana. Um, blueprint to, um, address these issues. Um, I know it's a challenge, but I think it's a challenge that we all in the state want to address. Especially for our African-American males here. Um, um, so I, I wanna say thank you, um, I definitely have more questions for the individuals. But, um, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Mister, excuse me.
Thank you, we have a question from a commissioner to you, sir.
Yes, uh. Welcome.
Uh, thank you.
At this time, South Bend does not have a chapter, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, are you gonna, okay?
I'm, I'm looking at trying to bring a chapter to South Bend, yes.
Alright.
I have a question, so if you mind.
Yes, sir.
What, what, um, commission or anything do you have for African-American males over there? What, you actually, cuz you're running for mayor, not reelect, right?
Correct, I'm running for mayor, um, so I am. I, uh, I do not have any access to any of the programs. However, the number one program in South Bend right now is the GBI program, which is group violence into initiative. Um, to address, um, and as a partnership, partnership with, uh, the police department. Um, the DA department, the prosecutors.
Right.
Um, and, um, the, uh, local community. And as a three-pronged approach, uh, community, law enforcement, and the, and the justice system. Um, to try to address some of the issues. Uh, they, we have found success with it, however, I think implementing an additional. Um, program, I, I don't think we can have enough programs to address these issues. Um, and right now, I think the biggest issue that I'm trying to push for is. Calling this a public health crisis. Um, if we call it a public health crisis, and we can get on board with that, I think we can. Um, tap into other resources on the health department side. So that we can bring additional funding to addressing these issues, especially about shooting in our community.
Think you oughta address it as a mental health crisis too.
True, um, and mental health crisis is something that we looked at, however. Uh, when you, when we were talking about mental health crisis. Now, we're getting into trying to address, um, the psychology behind it. Whereas, um, the effects of violence in our community is not only those individuals who are shooting. But the families that are left behind, so, um, we. I know my camp, we feel like a public health crisis, because. I, I can agree that I believe we all have some shape, form, or fashions of mental issues. But, um, I think the families that are left in the wake of violence in our communities. Um, just some of our mothers who have lost loved ones, um, after the cameras and after politicians. Are there in the initial, two years down the line, you still have family members who, uh, members. Who've lost family members and they have to live on, um, after the cameras are gone. Um, so it affects the public, so I think we're addressing the.
But I wasn't suggesting that we exclude.
Okay.
Public health, I was suggesting that we include mental health.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Yes, sir.
I mean, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Did you give us a quick bio? You're a lifelong resident of South Bend.
Yes, so, quick bio, I, um, I'm from Durham, North Carolina. Um, we moved, me and my wife, we moved here with our family, um, we have a blended family of six, um, and we have three grandkids. Um, we moved to South Bend eight years ago. Um, we, I was twenty, twenty years United States Army. My last duty station was, um, recruiting pre-meds at Notre Dame. So when I retired out of the army, uh, we fell in love with South Bend, we fell in love with the people, definitely not the weather. So, so my wife is from Orlando, Florida, so, um. We fell in love with the people and we wanted to make South Bend a home, so we bought a house. And during twenty years United States Army, you have this, um, understanding that it's a privilege to serve. And so I wanted to continue to, to serve. So, and the best way I know how to serve is to, um, run for office. And running for office consists of, um, whereas city council is great. Um, decisions are made in the mayor's office, and so we decided to run for mayor's office and. And hopefully we are successful at that. Yes, thank you.
Alright, good luck, are you, of any other commissioners have a question?
You said you fell in love with South Bend, didn't, didn't, uh, fighting Irish have anything to do with that?
Absolutely not, but now I am a Notre Dame fan. Now I am a Notre Dame fan, but I was a Tar Heel fan coming from North Carolina, but. No, no, my brother was a Blue Devil, and, um, I wanted to be against him on everything. So I became a Tar Heel fan, and when we got here, um. My wife's, one of my wife's first jobs was working at Notre Dame. And when Notre Dame starts paying you a check, you become a fan quickly, so, so we've been Notre Dame fans over the six. Exactly.
Okay, thank you, brother, no one else has a question, uh, we can let you take a seat this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate you very much. Okay, you guys, we got down to the, uh, switch the agenda over to public comment first, now a good of order. Roundtable, would anybody like to take off first? It doesn't matter to me.
I, I will, I had one comment I wanted to make, it was a graduate tour, a graduate tour comment. And that was to, uh, those members of this board who served on the housing commission. I applaud you on your success in elevating our status in Michigan.
Housing Authority Commissioner.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that would be me too.
Uh, you, Rodney, Stacy, rest of you.
Yes.
I, I applaud your success.
Mm-hmm.
In having us now, yeah, getting like a high rating.
Yes, sir.
I have no, you know, I, I had no idea about what was going on as far as ratings, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But I was very pleased to see that you guys were successful in moving the ball.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Cox had a lot of, lot of ups and downs and maintaining, but, uh, eventually. It popped up, so I, I was there throughout it all, and so was Mr. McCormick and Miss Benny. And, uh.
Stacy.
Yes, yeah, they were diligent, you know, we all have rocks in the ro, uh, in the road, um, but. Ultimately, the goal got fulfilled, and that's what matters.
That's all.
Anybody next wanna go to the commissioner roundtable? Ms. Faye? You good today? No information? Uh, you wanna double check? Okay, Commissioner Hurt, you quiet though, I'm not going for that one, Commissioner Hurt. We gonna say something today, brother. How long can I get wet, Mr. Hurt? Okay, brother, okay. Secretary Conley has nothing? Okay, so I wanna go last, I'm gonna give it to Mills.
Okay, uh, just since we're on the subject of the minutes with our new secretary. Uh, we have one of the best tools to assist you with your minutes, which is Alco. You can always, uh, go to Alco On Demand and view the meetings. And you can get your information from that, so that's one of the excellent services that Alco performs for the community.
I did that.
Okay.
That's great, I would think it was access, it's about putting in the time to get it done with all of us.
Okay.
But we just have.
No, that'd be, that'd be additional speed, you don't want that. Alright.
Interesting knowing if there's a way that we can just download the, um.
Alco.
Alco.
They, they stream all the time.
Yes, but. Put it in a minute form.
This Conley and I were gonna talk after the meeting.
Okay, that's amazing. I read on top of it, Ms. Secretary.
But once again, I just wanna acknowledge the fact that Alco has services that we can really tap into, and we're, we're lucky to have them in our community.
Yes.
Thank you for Alco.
No problem.
Andrew. Okay, next commercial roundtable, uh, our new bud. Oh, well, we get to Pastor Carol too, but right now we gonna go down the line to Mike Jones. Alright, Commissioner Mike Jones.
Alright, I just wanna make a statement, um, that.
It's light on, no, turn it off.
Well, I just wanna say this, uh, people say that, uh. Things don't, uh, repeat itself in history, but it's repeating itself now, Jackson, Mississippi. Uh, and down in Tennessee, you see that every day, so. Um, just inform your kids, grandkids, nephews, nieces, what's happening, you know, out there in the public. You know, for, they can get knowledge on it, and they can grow up speaking on it. Because we need some young voices coming up like them two young men in Tennessee, and. I mean, and they'll be equipped to do that, so that's all I'm gonna say right now.
Yeah, great, great, uh, vital information, and a lot of stuff that we need to pay more attention to, but I just will hope we can. I know, man, life's just, life just, man, it has a way of repeating itself, like you said. Okay, uh, I'd like to my commissioner roundtable. Oh, no, Pastor Carol, Brother Commissioner, Pastor Carol, would you have a roundtable?
Yes, I have something, uh, short to say, um. Uh, many years ago, um. Uh, I was a, uh, as a pastor, I was also a bail bondsman. And I was looking at criminal justice, and I was also a pre-trial release officer in Elkhart, Indiana. And, uh, there's much of a story about it, the African-American males. Um, where the bail bonding system was operating quite well, and I know, uh, we look at it today. As something that is obsolete, that should not even be addressed. But, uh, it was a time of reaching out to our African-American community and, um. The whole community as a whole, uh, to pray with them, bless them, help them, and help them. Um, get a job and, uh. Things that other people don't realize what a bail bondsman did at that particular time. And I was in it for about ten years, along with being in the seminary and being a pastor. And, uh, uh, we don't have that no longer. Uh, they were a great asset, we still have it in Elkhart. We still have it in Indianapolis and Gary, Gary, not Gary, yeah, Gary too. Uh, South Bend does not have any, and so, uh, now, uh, ten percent with the courts. Or, uh, I don't even think they go through a free trial release officer, I don't know about it anymore. But, uh, to make it short, uh, criminal justice, I know a little bit about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carol, for your input on the roundtable. We appreciate everything and everything you're doing, that's for us.
Thank you, uh, Pastor Carol, for your input on the roundtable. Uh, we appreciate all the wisdom you give us and information you give us. My roundtable, I'm gonna turn my hat backwards for this one, cuz what I gotta do is, uh, I have to go back into my element. Now, uh, my roundtable, as we all might know, I'm, I'm, I'm very diligent and active in my community. And when I say community, I'm not saying on one side of town, like on the side of town I live. You know, um, I'm president of Fly High Youth Services, CEO and founder. I go to every project in the community, every rough hood in the community, even the good and the bad hoods in the community. I've witnessed things that you guys don't witness, where you think it don't go on in your community. Probably would startle you, maybe fight you some, if you actually see it for yourself. Um, the violence and the. Then death of danger that we really are in, in this little town. You know, I do wanna mention that, one day I came to City Hall. To, um, do my presentation, I had my youth with me. We, uh, let the youth go out first to get back on the bus and sit on the bus. An unknown car with some other youth that wasn't a part of Fly High Youth. Rode past and seen a youth on our bus, getting on our bus, stopped, jumped out, went up on that bus. And threatened that youth with a weapon, they say, they say with a weapon. You know, we have a couple of youths say, well, I think I see him pointing the weapon, like saying, uh. With this insinuations of saying, um, I'll do you right here. Right in front of these kids, the heck with these kids, you know, but in a vulgar way. While I was in here trying to get up out of here, and, uh, I got texts over the phone saying, you know, what happened, I rushed down to. The police station, I mean, we're a prominent organization. We're no longer a pity pad or anything like that, so I did the best thing I could for our youth and the safety of our youth. We slammed down Michigan Boulevard straight to the police station. And my goal coming to this part of this conversation or story is not to antagonize the Michigan City Police Department. Or. The chiefs, assistant chiefs, or anything of that nature, but I did enlighten you that you were here for me. On a lighter note later, and this is later. I would like to just say to you, please, please, be more caring. That's all, what's understood, don't need to be explained, okay? Um, so next, with, uh, this commu, uh, commissioner roundtable. Um, what do we got going on? I just do so much, I don't wanna seem like I'm a workaholic, but I'm twenty-four hours. You know, twenty-four hours, that mean you don't do two-hour program, go home, and it's just everything goes away. No, it's, it stays there, you know, um, the shooting at the beach the other night. The shooting of houses. For the last, uh, in between all of this month and right when the weather started breaking, it's been multiple shooting of the houses. Including my son's mother house with my grandbaby inside of it. Devastated. I, I, and still no one has been brought to justice, which is no fault of all of the policing. And, um, no fault of the communities, you know, we can work together to try to capture them, but. This is real life we're living in. We can't, we, there's no finger pointing here. You know, no matter who and how many times we point fingers at someone, that's not gonna stop a youth. Or someone doing what they're doing, if, you know, we're not actually getting out their hands on. And, uh, grabbing them, hopefully before they even decide to shoot a house. Or beside, uh, decide to shoot each other because we giving them something to do. We giving them suggestions, we giving them opportunities. And, uh, that's our goal here at Fly Youth and myself, cause I'm an entity within myself. And I don't wanna seem so nice a lot like that, but I deserve it. I work hard out here. Um, I love my community and I'll go hard for my community. I'm sure everyone, us up here on this commission will also, unless you wouldn't be up here. Cause it's not about the money and we know that. And, uh, time is worth a lot more than money, I'll say that. And I've witnessed that just from having an organization and people saying, oh, we got a donation, oh, we got some grant money. I'm like, no. Give us your time. Give these babies your time, you know? So, um, other than that, we do wanna encourage people to go out and vote. I won't say who to vote for, make this a political forum, but it's early voting now. I'll wait till May second, May first, am I right, Fay? May first or second? May first, get out and vote for whomever you like. That'll be the end of my commissioner roundtable. Secretary Conley, you wanna, uh, adjourn or me know?
Why, I just have one question. Are these kids coming from the outside?
No, they're right here. They're right here. Yeah, they born, born and raised right here. Yeah, we're not gonna blame Chicago, South Bend, nobody. They're right here.
Because it's like.
Yeah, they, they homebred. They're right here.
So we know their parents.
You know, the guy, the kid that got on the bus that I was telling you about, some of the kids say he's, he's finna come up in here. Well, we said at city council, he was, wanted to come in here, but some other kid was relating to him. What, where we at, what we doing? They call that back door. And, uh, he's gonna come in here with all that. And they say, hey, police in here, you wanna come in here? So you guys might would have witnessed it firsthand, live action, the danger we are actually in, in this community.
I'm sorry. We just mentioned a number of things that you provide for the youth. But I think you overlooked the most important one.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
I know. That's what it's up. Thank you, Tom. That's what's up. Yeah, providing hope, leading by example. I entertain a motion to adjourn. We got out here ten minutes early. I must adjourn, I. Uh, thank you guys for joining us. Bye-bye.